Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting of January 14th, 2013. Our superintendent Alex Awad will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is one of the times the board meeting, when community members are allowed to address the board. There will also be a public hearing at the end of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time?
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Miette, 31, 419 Merrily in Roseville. Congratulations, everybody. Mr. President, here's my question. We've seen a lot of activity in the district with bond improvements and updates. How much work still needs to be done before these projects are completed?
That's a very good question. Mr. Alex Awad, our superintendent of schools, will be happy to outline and proceed as each administrator comments on the questions from the board.
Thank you very, very much for bringing up the subject. I'd like to ask that each administrator respond to the questions for their respective departments. If any board member has any questions or comments as we outline the various departments, please feel free to ask. At this time, I would like to ask our bond coordinator, Ms. Peyton, to give us an update on the progress being made throughout the district.
We are nearing the end of the bond program. The new Stealand and Compton Elementary Schools have been completed and additions and renovations to Dort, Fountain, and Kaiser Elementary Schools have been completed. The guest community center has been demolished and the site work was completed in the summer of 2012. The remaining roof at Eastland Middle School was completed and the renovations are scheduled to start sometime in the first quarter of 2013. Most of the work at Roseville High School has been completed, but this past summer, the final portion of the roof over the two-story section in the school and the Votech wing was completed. And the softball and baseball fields were completely refurbished with new drains, irrigation, outfield sod, new bleachers, new scoreboards, and the infield's were excavated and fully reconstructed.
Ms. Ferguson?
I see the construction has come to an end at Roseville Middle School. What was done there and what other projects are on the table for the 2013-2014 school year?
Yes, the renovations at Roseville Middle School are complete. This was a difficult phase project and everyone was extremely cooperative, which helped things run smoothly through daily construction activities. All the classrooms, auditorium, main office, cafeteria, and all the corridors were renovated. We also replaced all the asphalt on the parking lots, bus parking lot, and bus loop along the new concrete curbing and sidewalks. We have bid out the last two projects in our bond, Eastland Middle School and Patton Elementary renovations, as well as the cafeteria addition to Patton Elementary. We have 90% of the contractors hired and pre-construction activities have begun. As I stated earlier, the roof at Eastland has been fully replaced. The only remaining work that needs to be done are the renovations to the classrooms, main office, mechanical, electrical, and site work. This is also a phased project similar to the projects at Roseville High School and Roseville Middle School. The project completion is scheduled for the start of school in 2015. The work at Patton Elementary will begin this spring on the cafeteria addition. Once school is out for the summer, the existing school will be fully renovated similar to the other elementary schools. We updated and will be ready for school this fall. However, due to the amount of work that still needs to be done, the cafeteria will not be ready for the school, but will be completed by the end of 2013.
Ms. Mack?
Sounds like we're making good progress with this bond. When I drove by Huron Park, I noticed some construction. What's going on with Huron Park?
Well, the new gymnasium was completed at the beginning of the school year. This school is also being done in phases with total completion at the end of the summer 2013. Phase one has already been started. This includes updated bathrooms, classroom renovations, main office renovations, and updated Edison and Consumer Power Services. The classrooms along the west side of the school will be renovated this summer.
Thank you, Ms. Peyton. We have the utmost confidence in your abilities to lead us through these projects.
Ms. Miette?
Mr. Capano, with Michigan's economy being so bad, how is that affecting Roseville Community Schools?
As you know, Ms. Miette, the economic climate in Michigan over the past couple of years has been devastating to public education. I'd be more than happy to defer the question to our superintendent.
Mr. Vanderwilk, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance for the district, can't answer the question better than that.
The economy has affected the number of students attending school in Michigan. Tens of thousands of families have left the state over the last three years to seek employment elsewhere. Roseville alone has over 1,000 vacant houses within its borders. This is not just homes that have been foreclosed on, but also those families who had to pick up and leave in search of work because of other financial hardships. This impacts revenues and from local tax dollars and puts a greater burden on the remaining residents to pay off the annual bond payments. In addition, it also decreases the amount of local taxes used for general operations, therefore putting a greater burden on the state. State funding has been very precarious. The state has been relying on federal dollars to subsidize the foundation allowance due to local districts. That money will not be available next year and could mean major cuts in revenue. On top of that, expenses continue to climb.
Ms. Alanco?
Why does the state continue to cut funding to schools yet still increase demands and responsibilities for school districts?
That is a great question. In the past, the value of education was placed very high in the minds of state politicians and the public at large. It seems we are living through a tough time when it is easy or stylish to point the finger at education and tell them simply to take their lumps with the rest of the Michigan industry. It seems we have very few friends left in Lansing and the public is so distracted with poor overall economy that they have accepted some very abusive posturing by Michigan politicians.
Ms. Mack?
Mr. Capano, can you elaborate that some of the bond money that has been spent on technology?
Our Director of Technology, Ms. Ritter, can give you the appropriate details regarding some of the technology bond projects that have been completed or are in progress.
The board has recently approved technology improvements for the final two buildings needing to be renovated, Eastland Middle and Patton Elementary. The technology work will be coordinated with the building's renovation products. The technology improvements will be the same standards that have been installed in the previous building updates. These include classroom audio enhancements with connectivity to the teachers' computers, kiosk monitors as you enter the building, GPS hallway clocks, security door access systems, and security cameras. The elementary school will also have flat panel TVs installed in every classroom and the middle school will have a ceiling-mounted classroom, projectors that are connected to the teachers' computers. In addition, buildings received computers and printers three to five years ago, new infrastructure hardware, switches for the data network, digital copiers, upgrade to the district core network system, storage and core switch, and media cast of video distribution system. Starting in a couple of months, we will be in, will be the installation of district wireless access in each of the buildings.
Ms. Mack?
Mr. Capano, I would like to ask if Ms. Ritter could tell us about some of the advances that can be seen by the students in the community.
All Macomb County School Districts are using Powerschool as their student information system that is used to calculate grades and attendance. This system will have what is called a parent portal. This provides parents the access to students' grades and attendance. This is being used in the secondary and elementary schools. To keep informed on district happenings, please follow us on Facebook, go to our new and improved district website, or receive periodic emails through our district mail-out system.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter, for helping to explain what technology enhancements have been purchased with this bond. Ms. Alanco?
How has the personal office been affected by the financial losses of the past several years?
We will have Deputy Superintendent Headmark answer that question.
The steady and steep decline of school funding has forced the district to implement several million dollars in program and staff reductions over the past six to eight years. The cutbacks in programs and services have touched every employee group, including both certified and support staff. Our seven employee bargaining units have helped us address the financial crisis by agreeing to major concessions in salaries and benefits. The salary of every employee, including the superintendent, has been cut below the 2008-2009 level.
Ms. Sarecki?
Have any staff members been laid off?
To the extent possible, we have tried to reduce positions through attrition. Most of the vacancies resulting from retirements have not been filled, but unfortunately, it was still necessary to institute some employee layoffs, including teachers, social workers, custodians, and paraprofessionals. Last September, we were fortunate to be able to recall some of those staff members.
Ms. Miette?
I would like to thank Ms. Headmark for her extensive knowledge about the staffing.
Thank you.
Mr. McCartney?
Is the addition of the sixth grade being offered at Eastland Middle School a success?
I'll have Ms. Brittany Dawson, the Assistant Superintendent, answer these questions.
Yes, so much of it's success that has been implemented at Roseville Middle School this school year.
Mr. McCartney?
I understand that both middle schools have received school improvement grants. Could you please explain how these grants have been utilized for the past two years?
Money is available from the grant from both staffs and can be trained materials purchased in the areas of reading, math, and behavior modification.
Ms. Ferguson?
Mr. President, communication with parents is very important. What are we doing to keep the lines of communication between teachers and parents open?
I'll direct that question to our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Culpa.
I'm glad you asked that question. All staff members in the district have email capabilities, which is very helpful with communication. As mentioned by Ms. Ritter, the district has implemented the use of the parent portal in all our schools. We are using the mail-out system throughout the district for any parents that sign up by email.
Ms. Alanco?
It seems to be very helpful. Are there any other ways that you are communicating with parents?
We are using our district website to share information regarding the new state cut scores for MEEP and MME. Our district website has a link to video explaining these new scores. I encourage everyone to check this out. The website has been updated. Videos highlight what's offered for our students.
Ms. Mack?
I've been reading about adequate yearly progress in the papers for the last several years. Are we preparing our students adequately to reach our goals?
With these new cut scores, it made every district in the state have a more difficult time of achieving AYP. The new cut scores have lowered everybody's test scores, yet the AYP levels have gone up. Even with the tougher scores, all our schools made AYP in the 2011-2012 school year.
Ms. Sarecki?
Due to the fact that the ACT is part of the Michigan merit exam, it seems, it seems a lot to ask all special ed students to take the exam. Do special education students have to take the same required exam as regular education students?
Ms. Purdue, our Special Ed Director, can best answer that question.
Most special education students take the same test with modifications. Examples of modifications would be taking the test in a small group or having the test read to them. There are also, there are also other forms of the MEEP test for special education students. MEEP access and MI access, which is a form students with cognitive impairments. The students are also required to meet AYP requirements.
Ms. Ferguson?
In our district, how are students identified as special education?
If teachers have concerns about a student, they bring it to attention to a principal or counselor. Some interventions are put into place. Some interventions are put into place initially to see if the concerns can be addressed with modifications in a general education classroom. At the elementary level, students might get extra support from literacy coaches, math coaches, Waterford and Success Maker Technology, and et cetera. If progress is not made over time, a formal request for testing is recommended. The student is then evaluated by the school psychologist, teacher consultant, possibly a social worker, and/or speech and language teacher to determine if they qualify for special education services. Currently, there are approximately 894 students.
Ms. Miette?
Mr. Capano, with the continuation of this bond, have we added to the security in our buildings and how has this been accomplished?
I'll direct that question to our Director of Building and Grounds, Ms. Pope.
Yes, the bond continues to improve security throughout the district. For example, we continue to add security entrances in the buildings that are currently being renovated. Roseville High School added a security entrance with a video monitoring system to allow the office to view and speak with visitors from multiple locations within the building. The Buildings and Ground Office, along with the Resource Officers, continue to look to ways to improve security throughout the district, which includes the educating of our staff. Security entrances are now in place at every building that has been renovated. Patton and Eastland Middle School will also have security entrances when the renovation is complete.
Ms. Sarecki?
Mr. Capano, I would like to ask Ms. Pope if there are any other projects planned that will increase security at our buildings?
Yes, we are looking at all lighting throughout the district. This includes parking lot and entranceway lighting at all the buildings.
Mr. McCartney?
Are there any new safety systems in the Transportation Department?
I will ask Ms. Williams, our Coordinator of Transportation Maintenance, to answer that question.
Yes, we have added two camera systems, which now provide audio and visual to each bus that I have access to can be sent to the principals from my computer. Any incident that is up to three months old may be accessed.
Ms. Miette?
Mr. Capano, I wanted to ask Ms. Williams, with the new pilot program of the sixth graders being able to attend Roseville Middle School, how does that affect the transportation?
With these changes, we had to redistrict boundaries for the two middle schools. With this redistricting, we had to add extra stops for the sixth graders who are eligible at one mile. Seventh and eighth grade middle school students must still live 1.5 miles away from their home school.
Ms. Alanco?
Mr. Capano, I have heard some news regarding proposed new guidelines from the USDA regarding school lunches. Could you please have those explained to us?
Our Supervisor of Food Service, Mr. Meriwether, can speak about the proposed new guidelines.
New meal pattern requirements and nutrition standards become effective July 1st, 2012. Some major changes are: Only 1% unflavored and both skim flavored and unflavored meals can be offered. You must have two choices available. All grain products must be at least 51% whole grains. Fruits and vegetables are now in two separate components. Students must take a half a cup of fruits and vegetables for a reimbursable meal. Nutrition standards are established for age groups K-5, 6-8, and 9-12. There are daily minimum and maximum calorie limits for each age group. There are weekly maximum and minimum protein and grain limits. We constantly look for new ways to encourage our students to make healthy choices, both at school and at home.
Mr. Awad, I did have one last question. While watching the news this weekend, I saw a story about the new bullying law in the state of Michigan. How does that affect our district?
I would like to refer that question to our Board Attorney, Ms. Melanikova.
Our current district bullying, our current district bullying and hazing policy adopted in 2004 will only need slight additions to be in the compliance of the new law. The new statute requires the following additions to our existing policy by June 6th, 2012. Expanded procedures for reporting and investigation of this policy and specific procedures for reporting and investigation of this policy. The new law also encourages but does not mandate districts to include provisions of the policy about formation of bullying prevention task forces, training for administrators, employees, and volunteers, and providing educational programs regarding bullying, cyberbullying. The Republican driving legislature only encourages these programs as they obviously did not want to provide the money to fund for these programs. Rather left, school districts open to public criticize, criticism for not providing what they encouraged.
Ms. Alanco?
Can someone give an update on the new restorative justice program?
Ms. Dawson, could you give us a little information on how the program works?
The restorative justice program is an attempt to give a voice to the victims of conflict situations. More often than not, disciplinary RHS follows a predictable pattern. When the offense occurs, the offender is disciplined in the service of sentence suspension is most common. Then the offender returns back to school. Nowhere in this current model is the victim given an opportunity to speak directly to the offender, and more often than not, the problem is left unresolved and is often left to fester, becoming worse. The restorative justice program fills this gap in the system by allowing the victims and offenders to meet in a calm and controlled environment to speak about the issues bothering them. It allows the offender to hear firsthand how their actions have affected their victim and offers the offender an opportunity they have never get to apologize in a meaningful way to those that they have harmed. Both sides are then allowed to heal, having a deeper understanding of the matter. The program also offers conflict resolution between students. In these circumstances, there is often not a clear-cut offender and victim relationship. Rather, they consist of a young man and woman who have been taught the proper skills to settle matters without resorting to fighting, physical fighting. Again, they are offended, a non-biased, controlled environment in which they talk about their matters of concern. Most often, the parties leave with an agreement in place they can both abide by, along with additional coping skills to help prevent potential conflicts. While no system is perfect, initial surveys have shown overwhelming positive responses, positive responses from those who have gone through aspects of the program.
If there are no other questions or comments at this time, we'll continue with the next agenda item. This is the last of the public hearing. If anybody from the public wished to be heard at this time, please step to the podium.
This is the point in the meeting where I get to help him a little bit. First of all, you know, you people really need to be commended. This is really a nice bunch of kids. You know, I'm coming from a middle school, high school principal background, and I don't think I had to tell one kid today to behave or do this or whatever. That's different. You know, that's usually every other word I used to say. But what we're gonna do in this point in time is they've identified someone in their high school or middle school or elementary career that had an impact on them in some way. So what we're gonna do now is, but don't move yet, we're gonna ask that person to come up and stand behind him. And then each of the kids have a few things to say about those people, okay? So now's the time to move. Would you please come up?
My name's Tyler Vanderwilk, and I picked Miss Overleason. Miss Overleason was an outstanding teacher. The term "best-for-last" is tossed around a lot, but in this case, it was true because the year after I was in her class, she retired. I'm positive that her last year of teaching was her best, simply because I read so much. She taught me cursive, and now I have an awesome signature. It's always easier. It's always easier when teachers like you, and she nominated me for the Optimist Club Award. A few years later, I was invited to participate in People to People, and Miss Overleason wrote a great speech about me. She's left a tremendous impact on me, and I'll always remember her, and that is why I picked her.
Thank you. He was always a very serious student, very wise too. He's got a good boy. He's gonna have a wonderful future.
Right.
I'm Brittany Dawson, and I brought Mr. Mickens. I've met some amazing people throughout my four-year journey of Roseville High School. Amongst these people I've been surrounded by, the most influential man would have to be Mr. Major Mickens. From being a teacher to now serving as the athletic director, he's always tried, he's always strived to make sure I was doing my best in the classroom and on the field. Mr. Mickens has gotten the opportunity to see me try and mature over the years. Without him around, for me to get advice or steal me through obstacles, I have not have grown into the person I am today. He has always been there to teach me, push me, and guide me into making the right decisions. Whether I agreed with the final outcome in a situation or not, I know he cared and just wanted what was best for me in any circumstance. Big or small, he has, he has honestly benefited me more than he thinks over my high school years. Just now, any argument that was formed, disagreement we've been through, and all the stubbornness of both of us put aside. And I really appreciate each and everything you've done.
I'm Drew McCartney, I brought Mrs. Shackley. I'm not exactly sure when it started, but Mrs. Shackley would always remind me that I was a lucky boy. She may have, she may have started telling me this because we were constantly talking about my family in our Sunday dinners, or maybe it was just because, over time, she realized that there was nobody in my family I didn't have a good relationship with. Thanks to the multi-age classes at Arbor Elementary School, Mrs. Shackley was my fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teacher. I guess some might say I was a bit of a teacher's pet, but honestly, I just enjoyed having conversations that were not filled with elementary school immaturity. I knew that I could always tell Mrs. Shackley if something was bothering me, and she never failed to have the perfect response to pick me back up. Even though she doesn't look at, I'm pretty sure I've slipped and called her grandma a few times. This sounds bad, but considering the fact that she's met my grandmas, I'm sure she was able to take it as a compliment. To this day, when I run into Mrs. Shackley, we greet each other with big smiles and a hug. She will always be my favorite teacher.
Hello, I'm Courtney Miette, and I chose Ms. Hanson. After being in school for 12 years, many teachers have passed through my life. They've all left some sort of mark, but no one has really made an impression quite like Ms. Hanson. Whether it's on the softball field or in the hallways at school, she's always guided me in some way. She's taught me over the years to never settle for anything less than what I deserve and cherish every moment of high school because it's not lasting forever. The main reason I really chose her out of all the teachers in Roseville was because I can go to her with anything and I know she won't judge me or look at me differently. She would simply just tell me what to do and give me the best advice she could. Throughout high school, everyone matures and grows in their own way, tackling obstacles during this crazy four-year journey. Fortunately, I had Ms. Hanson to go to when the course got tough. Although we wouldn't always see eye to eye, I wouldn't trade it for the world. Ms. Hanson, thank you for everything you have ever done for me, and you have no idea what kind of impact you made on my life. kind of impact you made on my life.
Hey, my name's Alexander Awad, and I chose Mrs. Burns. I spent my whole life in Roosevelt Public Schools. Growing up, people always asked me who my favorite teacher was. Every time, I never hesitated to say Mrs. Burns. I know fourth grade was a long time ago, but I just remember her class being the best. From giving us candy when we got an answer right to letting us help her with little things around the class, she would always get her students involved, and as fourth graders, we loved to get involved. I look forward to coming to school every day because of her. Being in her class, you could just tell that she loved her job. Even though Mrs. Burns might not realize it, she made a lasting imprint in my educational career, and I will never forget her. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
My name's Anthony Capano, and I chose Mr. Verkan. When deciding who I wanted to honor, Mr. Verkan was an obvious choice. As a teacher, coach, and mentor, Mr. Verkan has had a tremendous impact on not only my high school career, but who I am as a person. He demanded perfection, both athletically and academically, day in and day out. He taught me to take pride in everything I do, and that anything less than my best effort is unacceptable. He pushed me to accomplish things that otherwise I wouldn't have realized I'm capable of doing. Throughout my years at RHS, Mr. Verkan has continued to monitor my grades and help me through some tough times, both inside and outside of school. These life lessons have shaped who I am today and will help pave the way for who I will become. For all that you've done for me, Mr. Verkan, I want to thank you. I can honestly say that I have as much respect for you as I do for my own father.
Hi, everyone, I'm Shayla Mack, and I pick Mr. Cos. I pick Mr. Cos because I've always admired his patience and his belief in me. He's never allowed me to be lazy in class. He always encouraged me to do my work and to try my best. From the times you've yelled at me to all your great words of encouragement, I really do appreciate all of it. I remember the first day of ninth grade English class, you came up to me and said, "I hope you are nothing like your sister." And obviously, I wasn't because I thought, throughout the years, I've noticed that just as much as you were my favorite teacher, I was one of your favorite students, or I better be. I just want to thank you for being here today, and thank you for everything. You're greatly appreciated.
Hi, I'm Breanna Ferguson. Tonight, I'm honoring my most influential person, my sixth-grade teacher, Ms. Elizabeth DeBucci. Still to this day, I hate calling her by her new married name, Ms. Lissinger, because she got engaged during my school year, and I never had to actually call her that. Through all of my years of school, every new memory can never top the ones I have shared with her. Ms. Lissinger has been a teacher in the Roseville District for 12 years, so to me, I never thought I would be one who stood above all the rest in her mind. From trying to help her plan her wedding or talking her out of our Friday spelling test, I have never had a connection as strong as the one I have with her. Ms. Lissinger has also been the reason for my love of books. One day, she came up to me and said, "I have this new book at home that I just bought, and I think you'd love it. It's called Twilight." Since then, I have read and talked about all the books in the Twilight series with her, and we have shared opinions towards other books as well. I would like to thank her for everything she has ever done for me, and if I could go back to the sixth grade, I would just have the chance to spend every day with her.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jessica Zelenko, and I chose Ms. Torp. One teacher that really inspires me, one teacher, that question was a no-brainer to me. I could listen to Ms. Torp lecture hours on end and still want to hear more. She is one of those teachers who makes you want to learn at the same time, inspires you to look at things from a different perspective. Not only is Ms. Torp a sensational teacher, she's an incredible and caring person. Her outlook on life is so admirable, and she is definitely a role model of mine. Her quote, "You're only having a bad moment, don't give up on the day yet," will stick with me for the rest of my life. Joining peer mentoring last year was one of the best decisions I've made in high school. It allowed me to get to know this incredible, loving goofball of a lady. Ms. Torp is someone I will stay in touch with long after I graduate. Thank you for sharing all your wisdom with me and making such a huge impact on my high school career.
Uh, hi, I'm Courtney Sarecki, and tonight, I'm honoring Mr. John Graumanns. I'm honoring him because of how great of a teacher, role model, and friend he is to me. Since the first class I had with him, I knew that I was going to love it. He had an awesome way of teaching that I just really connected with, and we instantly had a bond like no other. I've always wanted to pursue a career in the culinary arts, and having his hospitality management class brought me many opportunities that I'm very thankful for. Mr. Graumanns has helped me and my family through a lot of things, and it means the world to me. Sadly, I'm going to be leaving and will no longer get to see him every day, but I will never forget the things he has taught me. So thank you, Mr. Graumanns, for making my high school years so great.
Hi, my name is Holly, and I'm honoring Ms. Colius. As my civics teacher, US history teacher, and AP government teacher, Ms. Colius has played a huge role in my successful high school career. I always understood the importance of grades because they are tangible, but Ms. Colius helped me to also understand the importance of knowledge. Her classes inspired me to study, not because someone tells me I have to, and not just to ace my test, but to study because I have a desire to learn. She has a passion for history and politics that is contagious. Her lectures, class discussions, and debates never ended when the bell rang. They instilled a curiosity that left me questioning new ideas and concepts. She opened my eyes to a world so much bigger than Roseville High School. She inspired me not to just accept things as they are, but to analyze them. She taught me that a textbook is only an aid in education, is connecting the theory and thought to the real world that makes knowledge so valuable, and this I cannot thank her enough for.
I'm Daria Malakova, and I brought Mr. Sabo. Looking back at my high school memories thus far, there has been a couple of classes that I will never forget, one of those being Mr. Sabo's. I may not have had Mr. Sabo for very long, but his class influenced me a great deal. I enjoyed going to his classes, and I was interested in the subject. There was never a dull moment, and Mr. Sabo always made the class a pleasure to be in, whether it was discussing current events or his urine and his jokes. He has taught me that learning can not only be informative and beneficial, but very interesting and fun. I would do anything just to take his class again before I graduate. Thank you, Mr. Sabo, for an educational experience that I'll never forget.
Hi, I'm Julie Pope, and I brought Mr. Nguyen. First off, I would like to thank all the people at this meeting that have dedicated their lives to educating the youth of Roseville. Today, I am honoring Mr. Thomas Nguyen, my former sixth-grade teacher from Lincoln Elementary. Mr. Nguyen taught me a lot at a very young age that I still use today. He taught me self-discipline and to not only respect my peers, but to also respect myself. He has served as a teacher for many years, and he is also a respected veteran that served our country wholeheartedly. Mr. Nguyen, it is an honor to have been taught by you, and I thank you for serving our country. I commend you and wish you the best of luck and a very happy retirement.
I'd just like to say one thing about Julie. I'm very touched by this Julie after retiring for two years. I wish I could go back and try to sixth grade when Julie was in my class.
From the time I started kindergarten all the way up until now, every person I've met along the way has had an impact on making me the person I am today. Now, given the chance to recognize the teacher who has had the biggest effect on me, I choose Mr. Keith Marzak. From the time you taught me how to shoot a basketball in third grade, to that essay on Payton Stewart you made me write, and every trimester of the last three years with you reminding me that this ain't Sycamore Street, you have come to be one of my favorite people at RHS. I feel that you're a person I can relate to and somebody I could go to with anything I needed. When talking about my sports teams and real-life situations, you make me feel capable, and I know that if I work harder, I can succeed. You've made gym class my favorite place to be throughout the last nine years, and just walking through the doors, I feel welcomed with open arms. So, Mr. Marzak, I'm honoring you because you've taught me that even though life isn't Sycamore Street, it can still be fun. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Cassandra Payton, and I chose Mr. Madison. It was hard coming up with the words that explain the impact Mr. Madison has had on me the last couple of years. And coming to the end of my senior year, he is one person I would like to thank. So do you, Mr. Madison. Thank you. Thank you for accepting me in your immediate class. For me, it was not only a class, but a family, filled with experiences I will never forget. I knew if I were to have a bad day or have great news to share with someone, I could come talk to you about anything. Not only have you given me advice when I needed it, but you also pushed me to make better choices when I would slip up. Sometimes, we did not always see eye to eye, and not always that I liked what you'd have to say, but I did always need to hear it. I will always appreciate your honesty because it really has helped me a lot the last three years. You're a great role model and teacher, and the amount of effort and care you put in your job is incredible. Thank you for coming tonight. You're an honored teacher by money.
When choosing a teacher to honor, I had a lot to think about. As I did, I was brought back to the physics classroom 10th grade year. But it was more than Newton's Law and inertia that Mr. Zimmer taught me that year. He taught me to follow my dreams and eliminate all obstacles. He was one of the first adults to show interest in my music, giving me much-needed advice and a drive to become better, not just a better student, not just as an artist, not just as a... Oh, I messed it all up, man. Not just as a student, not just as an artist, but a better human being. It was Mr. Zimmer's words of encouragement that got me through a lot of hard times. He's a huge piece of the person I am today, and I will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Today, I choose to honor Ms. Angela Houghton. She has impacted my life on more than one level, in the classroom as a teacher, on the court as a coach, and my life as a mentor. She taught me how to be a leader and a good listener, just by the way she takes time to instruct and listen to me. I can say without a doubt that she's my inspiration, idol, and role model. From the way I see it, Ms. Houghton is living the American dream with a great family, a job teaching at Roseville High School, coaching this sport that she loves, and a team that adores her. I hope that one day I can understand the outlook she has on life and have it for myself. Ms. Houghton, I am honoring you because the last two years, you have made an impression on my life and the person I will become. So thank you for all you've done, for being in the gym with me five days a week, in your classroom when I need you, and most of all, for being here tonight.
Tonight, I chose to honor Mrs. Zimmer, simply because I can honestly say you've made a big impact on my life in the past few years. You're a kind-hearted person I can go to talk about with anything. You've taught me not to take life so seriously. It's good to have a fun joke and mess around, but there's times to be serious. You take your job seriously, and I have so much respect for you because of that. You always put others ahead of you and are a great moral model to look up to. You made media very enjoyable for me, and you make it better like a family for us. I honestly appreciate all your hard work and time you put into that class and our school as a whole. I would just like to say thank you for being such a wonderful teacher and role model for me tonight.
Hi, I'm Jessica Purdue, and I chose to honor Mr. Randolph. Throughout the few years I have known you, you have shared some knowledge with me that I will take and use throughout my whole life. You have shown me when it's appropriate time to speak or when it's time to listen. You show me with a great work ethic and drive, you can take the task at hand and make it into something more than you could imagine. You have taught me more than what is taught in an ordinary classroom, and all of your wise wisdom has helped me so much. I will never forget the times of us laughing at each other's witty humor, or I will never forget how you were always calling me mom because I would be restless with the task at hand and just do it myself for you instead of just helping and teaching you how it's done. You may be the old man to everyone else, but you're like a grandpa to me. So thank you for showing me how to keep my patience with others, and thank you for letting me absorb your knowledge and life lessons and showing me how to keep a smile on my face when the whole world tells me to frown.
Told you this was the best part of the whole thing. You know, what's so interesting is that all those people up there that they just acknowledged, you know, we deal with, our product are people, and you don't know what impact you have on people unless you do something like this. Because you just go along, I could tell a story myself that I, when I was a basketball coach, I had a kid, and he was a loose cannon. And I got him through school, and about, I think it was about eight years later, he called me. He was now the ambassador to Ireland. You know, and I thought, wow, I didn't think I had any impact on that kid, but he called to thank me from Ireland. You know, so thank you to all the Roseville employees for what you've done, and if we could have one last hand as they move down.
I was assistant superintendent of the business office, and my counterpart was Lynn Hutchinson.
Hi, I'm Brittany Dawson, and I was assistant superintendent, and my counterpart is Mr. Mike LaFevre.
We didn't talk about anything, mostly we talked about where she's going to school and about college.
My name's Drew McCartney, my counterpart was Matt McCartney, my dad, and we were the treasurer.
Where'd you guys get in a douche appearance while you're here?
Or who else is with you? Brother, sister, grandma?
Um, yeah, my mom and dad are in the back, next to my beautiful girlfriend Paige.
Brownie points for you. Aw, she's gonna cry. My mom and dad are in the back.
Say it. I'm here with my mom, my dad, my grandma, my grandpa, my cousin Sarah, and my sister Shelby.
Once again, I'm Courtney Miat, and coming tonight is my mother, my grandmothers, my sister, my brother, and my dad and other brother had to leave early for baseball practice. But I'm honoring birthday boy Greg Scott.
Now it's my turn to get back to her. She's quite active in the high school, volleyball, softball, so a team leader, and it was really interesting what they said today. One of the subjects they would like to see the increase is a two-hour block of calculus.
That's not the main token.
These kids want us to have a hard class like that. Basketball meeting or something.
Once again, I'm Alexander Awad. I spent the day with Mr. Komet. He's a pretty cool guy. I'm here with my beautiful mother and sister, over there in the middle back row.
I think America can feel pretty safe about what you see here today, and I think Roseville schools and the teachers need to be commended on the job, as well as the parents and the grandparents that helped shape the young people that are here today. It's been a real pleasurable day, and thank you for sharing it with us.
I'm Anthony Capano, and my counterpart is the president of the school board, Ms. Janay. And I brought my father, my grandfather's sister, grandmother, and mother in order.
When they started out this morning, they were a little nervous, but as you can see through the day, they lightened up, and I mean, we are so proud of them. I mean, we only went through this twice, they went through it with no problems, and you couldn't ask for a bunch of better kids, and we look forward to them at graduation. And parents, thank you so much for the job you've done because obviously, you did a great job.
I'm Shayla Mack. My counterpart is Francis Coney. He's not here today.
Mr. Francis Coney's mother passed away in San Marino, so he's over there right now. So we shared her. She had two of us today.
And my mommy's here today. And my mommy's here today.
My counterpart is Ruth Green, and I'm here with my mom and dad and my sister Samantha.
Hi, I'm Velka Zlinka.
Wait a minute. Ruth, you're speechless. This is a woman that's always wanting to say something.
And I was honoring Kevin Switnowski. I said it right that time. And my mom's here today with me.
This is a little sweetheart. The first time I called her, it was during school hours. But I left a message for her on the answering machine. Then I apologized to her. I told her my mom was temporarily in a nursing home, so my time was kind of limited. But we did kind of get together. So, it's been a beautiful day, and I've enjoyed it. And I want to thank each and every one of you, and I think that you've done a remarkable job. We couldn't ask for better kids, so thank you.
This always is one of our, I'm sure I can speak for anybody, this is one of our favorite nights. I mean, we have a couple of them. You know, the kids singing the Christmas carols, or last week where we had board appreciation. But this night here is really special. I wish you could have picked another mentor that's a little bit better than Ms. Torp. I'm teasing. I love Ms. Torp also. Did she leave? Hopefully, she didn't hear that. But this morning, as we're talking with the students, and you know, we asked, you know, what your plans are. And some of the colleges that these kids are going off to, we have no reason whatsoever to be... You know, Roseville gets knocked quite a bit. And you know, listening to some of these schools that these kids are going to, there's no reason why we have to be knocked around. And this is always great, and she did great. Unfortunately, I couldn't spend the day with her today, but I had to work. But thanks for the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Courtney Staraki, and my counterpart was Joe DeFleese. And I brought my dad, my sister, and my boyfriend with me.
I think Kevin pretty much said it all for me. But this is really great to have everybody here involved with their kids. And I wish more people would do that because things, I'm sure, would turn out a lot different than what they do. And I'm honored to be here tonight, and I think you guys did a really good job. The teachers, the administration, putting us all together is great. And I just want to say for everybody, keep up the good work.
I'm Holly Hedmark, and I'm here with deputy superintendent Becky Vaisal, and I brought my mom and dad.
And I just want to thank your mom and dad for providing us with this bright, beautiful young lady to think about the future of... Mike talked about his ambassador to Ireland. I predict wonderful things for the children you're meeting, the students you're meeting here tonight.
I'm Daria Malakova, and my counterpart was Doug Dining, or Denning. I came here with my mom.
Unfortunately, I didn't have the opportunity to spend the day with Daria due to my practice, but I can see by her performance here tonight that she has a very bright future. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Julie Pope, and my counterpart was John Steenland, and I'm here with my two sisters and my dad.
It was a pleasure spending, I was able to spend the day with Julie today in my office. We did a little building tour and showed them what happens around here in the administration building. Again, what a very, very bright student. She was asking me questions that were a little difficult at times, but... In fact, I had a feeling she was interviewing for my job. But at least give me another few years, okay?
Hey, again, I'm Megan Ritter, and I'm here with my counterpart, the director of technology, Mr. Michael Antoine. And my mom and dad came with me.
I would just like to say ditto to what everybody else has said. And I think Megan's a great person, and her parents are very lucky to have her as a daughter. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paige...
Hi, I'm Cassandra Peyton, and my counterpart was Mike Shafka. And I came here with my dad, my mom, and my brother.
I'd like to congratulate your parents. Cassandra's a great kid. If you can't make it in dentistry, you'll be fine as a construction person or architect. She asked a whole lot of great questions today, so it was really a nice time talking to her.
Hello, I'm Philando Mayweather. And today, I would shout out Andrea Dyser, the supervisor of food services. And I'm here with my parents, my mother and my father.
It was a pleasure working with him today. And we discussed that working at food services is a lot more than just cooking. I lost it when I said you have to take a lot of math and science. You have to be a little bit artistic with it. But it was a very good morning.
Hi, I'm Asia Williams. My counterpart was Mr. Dan Massey. And I'm here with my mom and my grandma's over there.
We spent a wonderful morning together. Went over all the security issues here, and she's gonna make a great person in life. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paige Culpa, and my counterpart is Mr. Mark Wiskowski. And today, I came with my mom, my dad, and my brother.
Within the short period of time, Paige is able to renew the faith in the youth of America. So, you read the news, and they always tend to, you know, they always want to look at kids, you know? We were all kids once. Somehow, we have forgotten how great they can be. And Paige is an excellent example, and she may even be a teacher someday. So, congratulations, Paige.
Hi, I'm Jessica Purdue. My counterpart was the director of special education, Jeanne Peterson. And I brought my mommy.
I really enjoyed spending the morning with Jessica. I hadn't seen her since we were both at what was then Roseville Junior High School. So, it was great to see how she had progressed over the years and to hear about her plans. We had a wonderful morning. I wish her nothing but the best in the future.
Finale. There's a couple people that put this together today that need to be recognized. Major Mickens, where are you? And Donna Berg is the other one. Donna's standing over by the student room. In approximately a week to two weeks, this is gonna be on cable. Mr. Janay has been taping this. Not only what took place tonight, but what took place during the day will be part of the program that'll be on cable. And I guess as I sat there in the audience today, my wheels were rolling, and my thinking, and I'm thinking. And sometimes you wait too long in life to say things that you should when the person was around. Mr. Nacita, my high school junior high teacher, thank you for what you did wherever you are. And I'm sure every one of you in the audience have somebody in your life that influenced you. If it was a teacher, they made you feel like they cared about you, and also, they made education fun to take place. So, think about the person that influenced you in your life. If they're still alive, give them a call. It's a great feeling when somebody said, "I had you as a teacher," or "you influenced my life." And that's all, folks.
You know, Mr. Kement just had a heart attack a few weeks ago, and we are very glad he is here because he has mentored all of us somehow down the road. And we are very glad that he is here with us tonight.
Be careful as you leave the building because there's some drool on the floor from me looking at the chocolate chip cookies that I couldn't eat. Yes, all of the students have name tags. Mr. LaFevre has one in his hand. Those belong to you. Please take the holder and the name tag with you. Have a great night, and...
I hope everybody had a great evening. And I'd like to take this meeting into adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn.
I motion.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That was good. That was great.